Pursuant to applicable law and my determination and attendance by remote means is necessary because an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent due to the declared public health disaster caused by COVID-19. This meeting is conducted by video conference. We will now have a roll call vote to establish quorum. And please remind, I want to please remind the alderman to make sure your microphones are unmuted when your name is called, and then feel free to mute yourself again. Madam Clerk, please call the room.
Alderman Laspada.
Present.
Alderman Laspada is present. Alderman Hopkins.
Present.
Alderman Hopkins is present. Alderman Dow.
Here.
Alderman Dow is present. Alderman King.
Present.
Alderman King is present. Alderman Harrison.
Present.
Alderman Harrison is present. Alderman Sawyer.
Here.
Alderman Sawyer is present. Alderman Mitchell.
Present.
Alderman Mitchell is present. Alderman Harris.
Here.
Alderman Harris is present. Alderman Beal.
Yep.
Alderman Beal is present. Alderman Zelaski Garza.
Present.
Alderman Zelaski Garza is present. Alderman Thompson.
Present.
Alderman Thompson is present. Alderman Cardness.
Present.
Alderman Cardness is present. Alderman Quinn.
Here.
Alderman Quinn is present. Alderman Burke.
Here.
Alderman Burke is present. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Lopez is present. Alderman Coleman.
Present.
Alderman Coleman is present. Alderman Moore.
Present.
Alderman Moore is present. Alderman Curtis.
Present.
Alderman Curtis is present. Alderman O'Shea.
Here.
Alderman O'Shea is present. Alderman Taylor.
Here.
Alderman Taylor is present. Alderman Brookins.
Here.
Alderman Brookins is present. Alderman Rodriguez.
Present.
Alderman Rodriguez is present. Alderman Tabarez.
Present.
Alderman Tabarez is present. Alderman Scott. Alderman Sito Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Sito Lopez is present. Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Burnett.
Present.
Alderman Burnett is present. Alderman Urban.
Present.
Alderman Urban is present. Alderman Talafaro.
Present.
Alderman Talafaro is present. Alderman Raboyas.
Present.
Alderman Raboyas is present. Alderman Cardona.
Present.
Alderman Cardona is present. Alderman Waggis Pack. Alderman Waggis Pack is present. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
December.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez is present. Alderman Austin. Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Present.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa is present. Alderman Vegas.
Present.
Alderman Vegas is present. Alderman Metz.
Present.
Alderman Metz is present. Alderman Spassato.
Nick Spassato is here.
Alderman Spassato is present. Alderman Nugent.
Present.
Alderman Nugent is present. Alderman Vasco.
Present.
Alderman Vasco is present. Alderman Apolitano. Alderman Riley.
Present.
Alderman Riley is present. Alderman Smith.
Present.
Alderman Smith is present. Alderman Tony.
Present.
Alderman Tony is present. Alderman Gardner.
Present.
Alderman Gardner is present. Alderman Kapelman.
Present.
Alderman Kapelman is present. Alderman Martin.
Present.
Alderman Martin is present. Alderman Osterman.
Present.
Alderman Osterman is present. Alderman Hadden.
Present.
Alderman Hadden is present. Alderman Silverstein. Alderman Silverstein is present. Anyone I missed?
Alderman Scott's present.
Alderman Scott is present. Anyone else?
Alderman Maldonado is present.
Alderman Maldonado is present. Anyone else? Going once, going twice? All right, Your Honor, we have a quorum present. Peter?
Your Honor, there are forty-eight members present.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. There are forty-eight members present. We have a quorum. We will now have the Pledge of Allegiance, and please remain standing for the prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag
The flag.
of the United States of America and to the republic
To the republic.
which it stands.
Which it stands.
one nation.
Under God.
Under God. indivisible.
Indivisible.
liberty.
Liberty.
justice.
justice.
The invocation will be delivered by Apostle Mark E. Henton of the Monument of Faith Church.
Thank you, Mayor Lightfoot, and also to Alderman Derek Curtis for the opportunity to give us invitation. Let us pray. Defying God, we thank you for your goodness and your loving kindness. We thank you, God, for this day, and we pray, God, for our city. We pray for our civic leaders, Lord, that as they come together, Lord, to make decisions, Lord, that you would guide and lead, Lord. As we, God, go forward into this year, I pray, God, that you would bless this city as never before. It's citizens, God, and all of those, God, who are part of making Chicago this great city that it is. We thank you, Lord, because we know your guidance and with God and ministry. Bless our God, God, and leader, God, and all of these, God, who have given themselves to be public servants to our city. God, we thank you, and we pray that you would move even in this season of COVID, God. Give direction and leadership, and we thank you, God, because we believe that you're moving us forward in a healthier, a stronger, and even in a better way. And we pray your blessings in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. God bless America.
Thank you, Apostle Henton. We will now begin the public comment. Madam Clerk.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of thirty minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for aldermatic review. The first speaker is Kiran Kajendra.
Dear Mayor and the council members, good afternoon. I'm Kiran from downtown Chicago. A big shout out to all the frontline workers. Great job, guys. I'm here to oppose resolution R 2020-583, an anti-India resolution, and urge the council members to vote no to this resolution. There has been a lot of unnecessary row about India's farm bills. Well, let me guarantee you that the farm bills resonate with every farmer's progress. Coming from a farmer's family, I can assure you that. President Joe Biden's office spoke in favor of the farm bills. The statement also acknowledged that Washington had always advocated for agricultural reforms. The three bills have been welcomed and appreciated by economists and farmers worldwide. I would like to bring to the council's attention that the Indian government permitted the protesters to hold a peaceful protest on India's Republic Day on January twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one. The rally quickly turned violent, resulting in massive vandalism to the public property and causing significant injuries to three ninety-five security guards, like the recent events at the U.S. Capitol. The protesters destroyed a symbol of the country's history, the Red Ford, that was built in the fifteenth century. However, some of the protesters in India went even beyond that by burning buses, destroying equipment, and using weapons to assault and harm the public and the police. Even after the violent protests, the Indian government did not take extreme actions to preserve democracy and the right to protest. How is that against human rights? How come the sponsor is against Capitol Hill's violent rights but not against violent protests in India? I request the council to make the informed decision regarding the recent occurrences in an important democratic ally. It is crucial that the strong democracies of the world, namely the United States and India, stand united not only against external threats and terrorists but also against anti-national threats formed within each of our borders. The Indian government has made COVID-19 vaccines available to all its citizens and provided them to various countries like Dominica, Afghanistan, Brazil, Mexico, et cetera. India is said to fulfill seventy percent of the world's coronavirus vaccine needs. Is that not an excellent gesture of humankind? Tomorrow, if the Chicago is in dire need of vaccines, India will be one of the first countries to help its sister cities. How disappointing. The same town is trying to accuse the Indian government that helps others in need. This resolution will cause a divide within the South Asian community. It will be characterized as the reason for conflict, leading to vested interest groups like Council on American Islamic Relations will triumph. Kindly request you to reject the resolution with malign intentions hiding behind human rights by certain groups. God bless America. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Shashir Shetty.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Shashir, and I am a mechanical engineer. I am here to speak against the resolution F O two zero two zero five eighty-three. On December twenty-three twenty twenty, Harneek Singh, a fifty-three-year-old radio host in New Zealand, locked the door of his house and mentally said goodbye to his family when a bunch of assailants attacked him. He was brutally stabbed everywhere. His head alone was put together with one fifty stitches. His crime, he supported the Indian farm bills that were compliant with the World Trade Organization's requirement. Why go that far? Just this month in California, a mob gathered and threatened the lives of Dr. Jaffra, an eminent cardiologist and his family for supporting Indian resolutions. Organizations like the Council of American Islamic Relations, also known as CARE, please remember the name, CARE, Equality Labs, Indian American Muslim Council, and many more are single-handedly responsible for misleading people in U.S. and creating a Hindu-phobic ecosystem. And this is precisely what they are bringing to Chicago City. Why stop at Hindu phobia? They are rank homophobes as well. Hassan Shibley, a CARE Florida leader, openly advocates for the rat of our LGBT people. CARE once even dropped the case of harassment against a niqab-wearing woman as soon as her sexual identity surfaced. CARE is declared as a terrorist organization in the United Arab Emirates. So the question is, what are our sponsors doing partnering with the extreme right-wing groups in Chicago? We, as a community, have tried to reach to the sponsor umpteen number of times, but we have had no luck. We've always realized that the sponsor had no intention to listen to our data or facts. The sponsor is too busy to reason with us while she's parallelly seen endorsing advocates of CARE and media people from Qatari state-owned Al Jazeera. Human rights violation of Qatar is a no secret. One politician said, "Our ward members are asking us to pass this." What about the veracity of their claims? What next, a resolution confirming that the earth is flat? We also suspect that some speakers did identity fraud in public speaking on February twenty-fourth, and we strongly urge that the city council investigate this. The levels to which we have fallen to demean the only democracy in the Indian subcontinent. Why does a resolution on human rights find no mention of Tibet, Pakistan-occupied Jammu and Kashmir, Muslims of Balochistan, Muslims of China? Why maliciously corner India? And are any of those lives left? And a last question, shouldn't we be bringing communities together instead of dividing them? Of course, CARE and the likes of them don't want it, but we do, and the sanctuary cities should. Instead, people here are polarizing my Indian brothers and sisters from Christian, Muslim, Sikh, and Hindu communities. I strongly urge that we stop politicizing international issues full of misinformation and vote no for this resolution. Willing to do so, we'll repeat Hindu-phobic incidents like the ones in California and New Zealand. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Shetty, for your comments. Our next speaker is Ashnath.
Good afternoon, respected mayor and council member. My name is Ashnath. I'm a student at Illinois Institute of Technology here to oppose the resolution F O two zero two zero five eighty-three. First thing first, it's not Kashmir, it's Jammu and Kashmir or J N K. But I'm not surprised that the sponsors couldn't get the name right, and that's just the tip of the iceberg. This kind of hate and ignorance towards brown-skinned Indians is not new. The mere fact that you choose to omit the Taliban-style insurgent ethnic cleansing of Hindus and omit the people of Jammu and their concerns altogether is not just microaggression one-on-one but also the age-old racism we face from the elite and influential of the West. The Indian Union Territory of Jammu and Kashmir held district development council elections in December twenty twenty. The sudden dispensation secured the largest voter share. Here's the best part. Even the voter turnout for this election was much bigger than the Chicago City Council election. So for the sponsors to patronize our people and disregard their opinion with a condescending attitude is not just undemocratic but also racist. Article three seventy and thirty-five A was a chauvinistic temporary amendment that promoted gender bias, which wouldn't allow women to love and marry a person from a different state. This would mean losing their land and their residence status. This draconian article promoted modern-day slavery. It prohibited the immigrant Walmiki community from getting a domicile status for seventy years. This meant their community could, by default, only clean the drains and streets of J N K for generations. This article promoted regionalism. People from any other part of India couldn't settle or secure government jobs, rendering the rest of Indians as too small for people to live in Jammu and Kashmir. This article disallowed the Dreamers, kinds of kids, of immigrants, from getting jobs or joining Indian military services even. Being a part of the LGBT community was criminal. Abrogating this article meant prioritizing human life. Please note that our neighbor is Pakistan, a rogue nation which is on the gray list of the Financial Action Task Force. Reversing archaic laws and impending foreign threat to innocent lives in J N K was our first priority. Three minutes is too less to share the accounts of Pakistani terrorist attacks in Jammu and Kashmir. But it's not rocket science that you have to be alive to have human rights in the first place. In a series of steps that the government has taken, the government has started schools that were shut for years, rejuvenated tourism with record-high visitors, boosted the economy with four billion U.S. dollars, mobile landline phones, SMS, unrestricted access to social media, and cable television are fully operational. So is this resolution truly motivated for Jammu and Kashmir's well-being? I don't think so. Tell me, council members, why are you criticizing India instead of supporting us? I sincerely urge that you oppose this resolution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Shashin Dev Trupathi.
Good afternoon, respected mayor and council members. My name is Sachin, and I'm a resident of Ward Forty-two, Chicago. I'm here to speak against resolution R two zero two zero dash five eighty-three, both the previous and the current version. This resolution talks about India and Indian democracy. This resolution looks like an extension of propaganda campaign against the current government of India by some of the vested interest groups who have associations with opposition parties in India. These organizations are not able to digest two consecutive election loss in the national elections. They have worked with some of the vested interest groups in U.S. to malign current Narendra Modi government of India. This is their common interest. I would like to clarify that India is a multi-party democracy and have more than two thousand parties registered in ECI, out of which fifty political parties play national role. They have their supporters in U.S. as well, and they have different organizations who are supporting this resolution. This resolution talks about human rights and criticized Citizenship Amendment Act, CAA, in point eight. CA is passed by Indian Parliament to fast-take citizenship for persecuted minorities coming from Afghanistan, Pakistan, and Bangladesh. This is so interesting that thirty-one thousand six hundred registered religious minorities, Christians, Sikhs, Hindus, Buddhists, Durrastians, Jains, who came from these three countries are still living in refugee camps right now, and they have no differentiation in this resolution. This is clear competition between a real persecution, which has already happened, and a fear of imaginary persecution, which is being claimed by sponsors of this resolution. I personally spoke to Mahalal Ghil, who is a Hindu Dalit who fled to India from Umar Coor district of Pakistan in twenty fourteen. He is living in refugee camps in India, and he said his wife and daughters are not safe in Pakistan. That's why he came to India on a religious visa, and he never went back. Do these people deserve basic human rights? We have seen recent cases of ISIS attacking Hindu and Sikh temples in Afghanistan, and these people came to India seeking asylum. India is giving asylum to all kinds of persecuted minorities. Some religious advocacy groups who are supporting this resolution, they never talk about persecution in Islamic countries. Why? This is so ironic that so-called human rights organizations who are supporting this resolution have completely ignored real persecuted minorities and did not give any platform to them. Is it a part of a design to set a false narrative? There is another refugee group in New York which is called Bangladeshi Hindu Buddhist Christian Council, who is also opposing this resolution. They have supported CAA, and that's why I would like to request everyone, all the council members, to vote no against this resolution, because this is based on propaganda and not the facts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Trupathi, for your comments. Our next speaker is Omkar Champirakar.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, all right. So thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to express myself. I would like to talk about the resolution R two zero two zero five eighty-three. This resolution is based on a lot of incorrect facts and misinformation. Please vote no for this resolution. This resolution is deeming the Citizenship Amendment Act, CAA, as discriminatory. Apparently, there is also an aftermath of passing the CAA as per the resolution. The only aftermath of CAA is the prosperity of Kashmir, which faces threats from terrorists across the border from Pakistan. Now, speaking of Pakistan, I am curious to know when the Committee on Health and Human Relations is going to introduce a resolution against the Pakistani government in which people from religious minorities have been decimated over decades of terrorist activities. Are the minorities in Pakistan not important to the committee? Why are you unfairly targeting India only? CAA has been democratically passed by both houses of the Indian Parliament. It provides safe haven to illegal immigrants who belong to minority religion from India's neighbors. By voting for this resolution, you are indirectly going to support the terrorists who have ruined lives of so many people in neighboring countries of India. If passed, this resolution is going to spread phobia against Indian people who support the current government in India and Prime Minister Modi. The work done by P M Modi for minorities is unparalleled but conveniently not talked about a lot. He has won awards from five countries in the Middle East, including Palestine and Saudi Arabia. His government has given free COVID vaccines to countries like Bangladesh and Maldives, which are Muslim-majority countries. Under his government, more Muslims got scholarships than the previous governments. In addition, he has also received awards from United Nations for his work against climate change. Indian government is proposing laws which are being challenged by people through protests. Indian government is then having dialogue with these people and then amending these laws. These laws are then being scrutinized by the Supreme Court of India. This is how a democracy is supposed to function, and India is doing exactly that. There is no police brutality or operation going on. People of India have decisively elected Prime Minister Modi twice. In spite of that, P M Modi's party loses at many state-level elections. Would it have been possible in an authoritative regime? I request this council to not spend their valuable time and energy on a resolution which is based on lies but instead channel the same passion in resolving Chicago's outstanding issues. So I beg the council to not fall for all the frenzy and vote against this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Champirakar. Our next speaker is Abdul Khan.
Good afternoon, council members. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. My name is Abdul Khan, and I strongly support this resolution R two zero two zero five eighty-three, and thank you all for giving me this opportunity to speak today in support of this resolution. I would like to voice my concerns over the human rights violation that's happening in India under the Modi regime in the name of Citizenship Amendment Act, CAA, or revocation of constitutional status of Kashmir or Delhi programs or the farmer's law, and the list goes on. So there's no end to this list. There was a lot of mention of CAA in the recent discussions. I'd like to bring your attention towards CAA a little bit. So CAA has been widely condemned throughout the world, including the United Nations Human Rights Commissioner, Michel Bachelet, who called it fundamentally discriminatory. The United States Commission of International Religious Freedom has called upon the U.S. government to designate India as a country of particular concern, or CPC, as one of the world's most worst offenders of religious persecution, because Indian Prime Minister Narendra Modi and his government have been tolerating systematic ongoing religious freedom violations as defined by the International Religious Freedom Act. According to MSNBC's Chris Hayes, Modi with his hard-right policies, open bigotry, and constant rhetorical war against those he views as his domestic enemies in the kind of foreign leader Trump praises, as they both have fascism in common. Both leaders appeal primarily to their country's majority community, white supremacists in America, Hindu nationalists in India. Both despise and in turn are despised by traditional elites, including the media. Arguably, Mr. Trump's so-called Muslim ban on Modi's Muslim ban and Mr. Modi's controversial citizenship law are cut from the same ideological cloth. There was a lot of talk about voting no against this resolution, so let me go to, let me put a little light on that. I request the council members to review the resolutions, paragraph eight, which is word to word from President Joe Biden's website, joebiden.com. Additionally, I'd also like you to review the paragraph nine. This paragraph urges the Indian government to, and I quote, "Respect the human rights of all people. Condemn all religiously motivated violence against," including the violence which targets the Muslim minority, and prosecute anyone who actively is actively inciting violence. Therefore, I am in strong support of this resolution R two zero two zero five eighty-three, and request-
Mr. Khan, thank you very much for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Fadaz Bora.
So, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Honorable mayor and council member, City of Chicago, good afternoon. My name is Feroj Vahora. I support resolution R two zero two zero five eighty-three, and I humbly urge the council members to vote yes and support resolution R twenty twenty five eighty-three. I own wholesale distribution business located in the great twenty-first ward of Alderman Brookins in West Chatham. India is the world's largest democracy. USA-India share a lot of common values which are under threat. India is the second-largest trading partner of the United States after China. City of Chicago also does a lot of business with India. I encourage City of Chicago Council and the mayor office to even double the business with India and do a lot of business with India, but with accountability, ethics, and morale. City of Chicago is a great diversity, and we as a city cannot continue ignoring human rights violations committed by our trading partner, which is India. I thank Aldo Person Maria Hedon of Forty-Ninth Ward for sponsoring this resolution. Also, I thank Chairman Sawyer and Member of Health and Human Relations Committee for voting. This resolution committee as a whole, we had seventeen votes yes and zero vote against this resolution. This resolution was negotiated and discussed with mayor office over the last six months. Originally, it was a three-and-a-half-page resolution, and now we have half a page resolution. So this resolution just did not came to the council overnight. Deputy Mayor Samir Mayakar and his team and twenty different coalition partners in City of Chicago and across the, you know, USA worked together over six months, and we have support from State Senator L G Sims, State Senator Napoleon Harris, State Rep. Bill Davies, six suburb mayors, twenty council members of the south suburbs, two clerks of City of Calumet City and City of Harvey. So I humbly request City Council to support resolution R two zero two zero five eighty-three. God bless USA. God bless City of Chicago, and God bless all the council members and mayor office. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bora. Our next speaker is Sammy Udin.
Honorable council members, this is Sammy Udin. Thank you for this opportunity to speak in support of the resolution R two zero two zero five eighty-three. I strongly support this resolution and request you to vote yes. Human rights issues in India are a matter of global concern now. Only last year, the U.S. State Department reported rise of- reported rise of religious intolerance in India under Prime Minister Modi's right-wing government. Religious minorities, including Christians, are facing increased violence under Modi. Amnesty International is kicked out of India for reporting human rights violations. Only a couple of days back, in Australian Parliament, Senator Janet Royce of Australia spoke of gross and serious human rights violations in India. United Nations High Commissioner for Human Rights has repeatedly voiced her concern about human rights violations in India and Jammu and Kashmir. The right-wing nationalist government in India has created an environment of hate and bigotry like Donald Trump did in USA. They both normalized the violence against their own public. They both made dissent punishable. They both use social media media with twist to scratch falsehood. They both disregarded science, misuse institutions, and disdain minorities. We cannot stand by to watch the rise of Hitler in India. Do not let the world see another Holocaust of Germany or genocide of Rwanda of nineteen ninety-four or the systematic extermination of Bosnian Muslims, Bosnian Muslims in nineteen ninety-five in Bosnia. Sadly, in all these three cases, world stood by and watched. Honorable members, like you, we do believe in diversity. Diverse Indian society that lived in harmony for hundreds of years is now systematically polarized by Modi, just like Trump did to spread hate against each other in USA that led to unbelievable insurrection in January. We all should stand with Amnesty International, Human Rights Watch, and United Nations High Commission for Human Rights to press Indian authorities to take immediate steps to guarantee safety of all communities, protect rights of civilians, releasing political detainees, upholding the right of free speech with withdrawing the cases against journalists, farmers, and activists, and punishing officials responsible for human rights violations. Silence is not an option on honorable members. Your voting yes to pass the resolution will send message to the world that the honorable members of this council stand with the Americans who fight for the human rights suppressed and stand against oppression anywhere in the world. Again, I request you to please vote yes to pass the resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Udin, for your comments. Our next speaker is Montika Anad.
Hi, this is Montika. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Alderman persons. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Let me begin by bringing to your notice that during insurrection on January sixth in Capitol Hill, there was only one international flag, and that was of India waved by an Indian nationalist. Nationalism, as we all know, is a scourge, divisive in nature, and nationalists have some sort of mystic belief that their country is somehow intrinsically better than others. When religion gets mixed into it, nationalism can really get toxic as its partisans scream that God is on their side and therefore hates their enemies. Unfortunately, we have seen India swept with violent nationalism in the past seven years after the election of Prime Minister Modi, a product of RSS to power. The RSS in India, which was founded on Nazi ideology, has its international branches in forty countries known as HSS. U S has the maximum number of HSS branches, with Chicago as no exception. In two thousand eighteen, CIA identified RSS as a nationalist organization. Its other Hindu branches, VHP and Bajrang Dal, were declared militant religious outfit. FYI, there is a VHP branch in Chicago as well. The Hindutva ideology of HSS has nothing to do with Hinduism. Difference between Hindutva and Hinduism is that of hate and love, of exclusion and inclusion. Hindutva are always offensive and angry and see others as enemies, and that is why they tend to gaslight everyone who calls them out for their violence, hatred, and bigotry as Hindu-phobic. They even call Hindus opposed to their ideology as Islamic terrorists. They call this resolution as a call by anti-India and anti-Hindu Islamic terrorist forces. It would have been laughable if it was not dangerous. The threats and Islamophobic comments that are going from HSS and affiliated organization members to Indian political activists in USA have gotten more bold and brazen since former President Trump's win. During the World Hindu Conclave held in Chicago in two thousand eighteen, when some progressive South Asian women raised slogans, they were kicked and spit upon by the brave Hindutva men. Today, we need the most populous city in the U S to make all its dwellers feel belonged and safe. This resolution is not just a piece of paper, but a declaration that Chicago not only takes pride in its diversity, but also stands for its South Asian diaspora unconditionally and wholly. I urge all Alderman persons to vote yes to R twenty twenty-five eight three anti-CAA resolution and declare Chicago a welcoming city to its entire diverse population. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you, Miss Anad, for your comments. Our next speaker is Shoaab Kadri.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Honorable City Council members, thank you for giving me this opportunity, and I'd like to thank the City Council for considering Chicago Resolution R twenty twenty-five eight three. I am calling to express my support for this resolution, and I humbly urge the council members to vote yes on this very important issue. I understand that you may be overwhelmed by many comments in support of this resolution. Now, the only reason we repeat our appeal is because we feel passionate about its importance. Passionate about the religious minorities in India, the Christians, the Dalits, the Muslims, the Sikhs, who are victims of religious intolerance. We are passionate about the courageous journalists who dared to oppose the injustice and are lamenting in jails for want of justice for themselves. Passionate about the millions of farmers who brave the cold winter and the police brutality only because they want to provide for a better life for themselves and their children. Please, don't just take our word for this, but read reports from respectful international organizations like Human Rights Watch, Amnesty International, the United States Commission on International Religious Freedom, and many representatives of the U S Congress, who have expressed their explicit concern about this issue. Council members, please note that this resolution is not anti-India as some of the opposes other speakers mentioned. On the contrary, the supporters of this resolution are also supporters of the great democracy that India was intended to be. We are supporters of India's great constitution. And the people opposed to this resolution are doing so only for their selfish political motives and to hide the truth of the travesty of justice that is being perpetrated in India. And why is this important for Chicago? Well, as one of the largest cities in the United States, that's home to many people of Indian origin who really care about their country of birth, it is important that you stand up for these constituents of yours. I am making this appeal to support this resolution, not only to protect those who are victims of injustice in India, but because it is the right thing to do. Please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kadri, for your comments. Our next speaker is Jasviroo Singh.
Hello, Chicago City Council members. My name is Jasviroo Singh, and I support the resolution twenty twenty-five eight three. Thank you for the opportunity to speak as I voice my concerns for the farmers and the supporters. And I thank the Health and Human Relation Committee for passing this resolution. India prides itself on as the largest democracy, but democracy allows peaceful protest, freedom of press and expression. Twenty-one-year-old activist, Desha Ravi, was arrested for sharing a document. No, this was not any WikiLeaks. It was a simple document to help people get educated and involved about the farmers' protest. Many of us have used toolkits, and actually, they're encouraged. You, as Alders and leaders of the community, would be proud of this young lady for being involved in the community. But good thing you don't live in India as a minority, because you would end up in jail with charges of sedition, a serious crime that can give you life in prison. Mina Harris, Vice President Kamala Harris's niece, called for the release of Nodi Kaur, twenty-five-year-old human rights activist who was in prison since January. Her arrest caused outrage in the world as she was beaten, tortured, and sexually assaulted in police custody. Why? Because she was protesting and encouraged laborers to join the protest as it would affect them as well. Hypocritically, over forty percent of MPs in India have criminal cases and convictions. Human Rights Watch says eight journalists who covered farmers' protests and violence by Delhi police have been facing baseless criminal charges. And Rihanna, who tweeted, "So, anybody could ignore a tweet. Why aren't we talking about this?" Normal people would if you disagree. However, BJP trolls blasted her, calling her Rihanna "is a Muslim", Rihanna "is Pakistani terrorist, a porn star", and praised Chris Brown for assaulting her. "I, as a female, feel so blessed living in the United States and Chicago, which values the freedom of religion, assembly, and speech. BJP does not." I am grateful for the public comments that you allow in the plight of farmers, activists, and journalists. If India wants to call itself the largest democracy, human rights should not be a debate. If you support human rights, I urge you to vote yes and support a resolution twenty twenty-five eight three. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Singh, for your comments. The time allotted for the public comment period has expired.
This concludes the public comment. Next up is Communications, Madam Clerk.
I, Clerk Anna Valencia, hereby inform the City Council that the following document was filed in my office. Inspector General's follow-up report concerning Department of Water Management's overtime monitoring. I, City Clerk Valencia, also inform the City Council that all those matters which were considered by the City Council at the regular meeting held on February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, and which were required by statute to be published in a book or pamphlet form, or one or more newspapers were published in pamphlet form on February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the Journal of Proceedings of the City Council of the City of Chicago. I, City Clerk Valencia, also transmit here with the following miscellaneous communication requiring City Council action: A resolution requesting denial of permits for Reserve Management Group, which is referred to Committee on Committee and Rules. Your Honor, that concludes the communications from the city officers.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair recognizes Alderman Dow.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam President. To avoid a potential conflict with Alderman Silverstein and others observant of the Sabbath, I move to suspend the rules to consider one item of unfinished business which was noticed and filed with the clerk pursuant to Rule forty-one.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. I have one item that I noticed up pursuant to Rule forty-one, which is an amendment to the annual appropriation ordinance for the year twenty twenty-one within Fund nine-two-five for the Office of the Mayor, the Office of Budget Management, the Office of Housing, the Department of Housing, the Department of Public Health, and the Department of Planning and Development, which was deferred and published and appears in the Journal of Proceedings on February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one as SO twenty twenty-one dash four fourteen. If no one wishes to speak on this item, I move passage by roll call vote.
Madam President.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Burke.
Madam President, thank you very much, and ladies and gentlemen of the council. This matter that Alderman Dow just addressed comes before us today pursuant to Rule forty-one of the Rules of Order of the Council. Motion is related to the request to defer and publish Item Two of the Report of the Committee on Budget offered at the council meeting of February twenty-fourth, two days ago. At the meeting of the Budget Committee, which was conducted on Friday, February nineteenth, several members of the council posed questions that the witnesses were unable to answer. And then Chairman Dow instructed the Budget Director to provide written answers before the council meeting scheduled for February twenty-fourth, two days ago. For instance, Alderman Laspada inquired about the number of arrests made by the CPD at the COVID nineteen quarantine and isolation sites. There were none. Alderman Laspada also asked for a breakdown of salary and fringe totals charged to the CRF for the CPD. Responses to these inquiries are contained in memorandum which were emailed to all the members of the City Council dated February twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, and received on February twenty-third, twenty twenty-one at approximately four P M, some eighteen hours before the council meeting was scheduled to begin. I assume the members of the council have received these memorandum. I have. Alderman Harris, the mayor's floor leader and prospective future chairman of the Democratic Party of Illinois, also posed questions requesting additional information regarding CPD personnel costs charged to the Coronavirus Relief Fund, CRF, which generated a memorandum from Susie Park, the Budget Director of the Office of Budget and Management, which was also dated February twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, and contained four pages. Page two of that memorandum contains the following statement in paragraph two, and I quote. "The various COVID nineteen response functions of CPD included but were not limited to augmenting security at the airports for screening passengers, security at testing isolation and quarantine sites, staffing at the McCormick Alternate Care Facility, community wellness checks, and other activities as described in further detail beginning on page three." Director Park's memorandum also on page two contains this statement. "Further, the city has limited these expenses to CRF to only those incurred from March first, twenty twenty, to May sixteenth, twenty twenty, the initial height of the pandemic." Unquote. We can assume only then that the eight hundred, strike that, two-hundred-eighty-three-point-five-million-dollar reimbursement is limited to that ten-week timeframe. On page three, there's a paragraph entitled Conducting Wellness Checks. That paragraph contains the following statement, quote, "In twenty twenty, CPD performed sixteen-thousand-five-hundred-fifty-five well-being checks on residents." Unquote. Since this reimbursement discussion is limited to March, April, and two weeks in May, we might be able to attempt to extract from the statement how many wellness checks may have occurred in the timeframe suggested by the Office of Budget and Management. That is, ten weeks. The total one-year wellness checks were sixteen-thousand-five-hundred-fifty-five. Divided by fifty-two weeks means there were three-hundred-eighteen per week. Times ten weeks equals three-thousand-one-hundred-eighty-three. Divided by twenty-five police districts means there were one-hundred-twenty-seven per district, and divided by ten weeks, thirteen per week per district. We know not what portion of the two-hundred-eighty-three-and-a-half-million-dollar reimbursement was allocated to wellness checks. There's no data on that question. Moreover, there's no statement as to whether these wellness checks were in person or by phone or whether if in person, conducted by one or two officers. But the memorandum also refers the reader to a video via Twitter, and that CPD tweet contained the following statement. "Every day, officers across the city are conducting well-being checks on senior citizens. On the phone and in person, CPD is making sure senior citizens are staying safe and healthy during the pandemic." Page three also contains a paragraph entitled Providing Security at the Alternative Care Facility Support Hotels and Testing Sites. This paragraph contains the following sentence, quote, "CPD provided security for staff and medical resources at the Alternative Care Facility at McCormick Place twenty-four hours a day." There's no information regarding the number of CPD officers assigned to this duty, nor is there any information regarding the number of officers assigned to the other sites, both hotel and community-based testing sites. Page three also includes a paragraph entitled Augmenting Security at Airports. It should be noted that the annual appropriate It should be noted that the annual appropriation ordinance provides for 220 Chicago police officers to be assigned to O'Hare Airport at a cost of $20,034,002. That's at page 489. And 319 aviation security officers at a cost of $23,903,500. Additionally, several hundred TSA and Customs officers provide services to the operations of the airport. But what is more significant is that these appropriations for city police and security officers come not from the corporate fund, but from the Chicago O'Hare Airport Fund, an enterprise fund. See pages 488 through 497 in the 2021 budget recommendation. It's also of interest to remember that the federal government issued a travel advisory on March 19, 2020, which essentially closed the international terminal and dramatically reduced domestic air travel. Likewise, the same observations can be applied to Midway Airport operations, where 74 Chicago police officers are funded at $7,299,360, page 455, and 74 aviation security officers are funded at a cost of $5,610,754. That's at page 464. These expenditures are also appropriated from the Midway Airport Fund, not the corporate fund. The memorandum also fails to list how many officers were pressed into service for quarantine or mask mandate calls. Page three also contains a paragraph entitled Lakefront Park Space Restriction Safety, and I quote: "Helicopter support conducted missions along the lakefront or parks to monitor groups gathering in violation of the state and municipal restrictions." There's no information regarding how many officers were assigned to these functions, but clearly the helicopter crew consists of two or perhaps three officers, and there's no information regarding how many helicopter missions were launched. Page five of the Director's memorandum addressed security support for retail and restaurant establishments, and I quote: "CPD responded to complaints of stores and restaurants overcapacity under the city and state capacity restrictions." Unquote. There is no information regarding the number of responders, the districts, or locations of the responses, or how many there were. The paragraph went on to state, quote: "Additionally, CPD responded to more than 500 tips during a 77-day period." That represents 6.5 per day. In short, the memorandum from Director Park to Chairman Dow provided more questions than answers. It's hard to conceive how these memoranda can justify the expenditure of $281.5 million in a 10-week period of time, providing there are no examples of how many officers were redirected from their ordinary assigned duties to augment. Augment is Director Park's word, the functions purported to justify this reimbursement. In examining the justification, one might review the 2020 appropriation for the Chicago Police Patrol Services appearing at pages 182 through 183 of the budget book. This covers all district law enforcement positions and salaries. The total for the entire year is $882,181,636, and on page 183 provides a subsection position total of $10,417. The weekly cost is approximately $16,400,000, or about $1 million more than the weekly cost proposed by the Budget Office for reimbursement from the Coronavirus Reimbursement Fund. That fact alone speaks volumes about this proposal. This proposed application for reimbursement should be supported by clear and convincing factual evidence, and that simply is not the case. I move that this matter be re-referred to the Committee on Budget for further hearings and request roll call on the motion.
The Chair recognizes Chairman Harris. Harris, I believe that you're still muted.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Move that we lay that motion on the table.
There's a motion to lay on the table Alderman Burke's attempt to send this back to committee for further delay. There's a request for a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the motion to lay Alderman Burke's attempt to send this matter.
Point of order, Madam President. Alderman Lopez.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. As a point of order, this is not an attempt to delay. This is an attempt to move, to re-refer. That is the motion, without bias. Thank you.
The motion that's on the table, sir, is a motion to lay on the table Alderman Burke's attempt to send this back to committee. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. You'll be voting. All those in favor of the motion to lay it on the table signify by saying aye.
Fire roll call vote on the motion. It's a roll call.
I understand there's a roll call, and please don't interrupt the chair. You know that the rules are... Hold on, sir. The rules are in this virtual meeting. If you want to speak, please use the raise your hand function. Shouting out will not be recognized by the chair. Let me repeat. There's a motion to lay it on the table, which is a motion to lay on the table Alderman Burke's attempt to send this back to committee. All those in favor of the motion to lay it on the table so that the matter will proceed signify by saying aye. Those opposed say nay. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Laspada.
Aye.
Alderman Laspada is an aye. Alderman Hopkins.
Aye.
Alderman Hopkins is an aye. Alderman Dow.
Aye.
Alderman Dow is an aye. Alderman King. Alderman Harrison.
Nay.
Alderman Harrison is a no. Alderman Sawyer.
No.
Alderman Sawyer is a no. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Harris is a yes. Alderman Beal.
No.
Alderman Beal is a no. Alderman Zelaski Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Zelaski Garza is a yes. Alderman Thompson.
Yes.
Alderman Thompson is a yes. Alderman Cardness.
Yes.
Alderman Cardness is a yes. Alderman Quinn.
Yes.
Alderman Quinn is a yes. Alderman Burke.
No.
Alderman Burke is a no. Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Lopez is a no. Alderman Coleman.
No.
Alderman Coleman is a no. Alderman Moore.
Yes.
Alderman Moore is a yes. Alderman Curtis.
No, I'm sorry.
Alderman King is a no. Alderman Moore.
Alderman Moore said yes.
Oh, sorry. Alderman Moore is a yes, sorry. Alderman Curtis.
Aye.
Alderman Curtis is a yes. Alderman O'Shea.
Yes.
Alderman O'Shea is a yes. Alderman Taylor.
No.
Alderman Taylor is a no. Alderman Brookins.
No.
Alderman Brookins is a no. Alderman Rodriguez.
No.
Alderman Rodriguez is a no. Alderman Tabarez.
Yes.
Alderman Tabarez is a yes. Alderman Scott.
Aye.
Alderman Scott is a yes. Alderman Tito Lopez. Alderman Maldonado.
Alderman Tito Lopez is a no.
Alderman Tito Lopez is a no. Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Burnett.
Alderman Burnett is a yes.
Alderman Burnett is a yes. Alderman Talafaro.
Yes.
Alderman Talafaro is a yes. Alderman Raboyas.
Yes.
Alderman Raboyas is a yes. Alderman Cardona.
Aye.
Alderman Cardona is a yes. Alderman Waggis Pack.
Yes.
Alderman Waggis Pack is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
No.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez is a no. Alderman Austin. Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
No.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa is a no. Alderman Mits.
Aye.
Alderman Mits is a yes. Alderman Spassato.
Next Spassato is a yes.
Alderman Spassato is a yes. Alderman Nugent.
Yes.
Alderman Nugent is a yes. Alderman Vasquez.
No.
Alderman Vasquez is a no. Alderman Napolitano. Alderman Riley.
Yes.
Alderman Riley is a yes. Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Smith is a yes. Alderman Tunny.
Yes.
Alderman Tunny is a yes. Alderman Gardner.
No.
Alderman Gardner is a no. Alderman Capelman.
Yes.
Alderman Capelman is a yes. Alderman Martin.
No.
Alderman Martin is a no. Alderman Osterman.
Aye.
Alderman Osterman is a yes. Alderman Haddon.
No.
Alderman Haddon is a no. Alderman Silverstein.
Yes.
Alderman Silverstein is a yes. Anyone I missed?
Alderman Viejas, yes.
Alderman Viejas is a yes. Anyone else?
Alderman is a yes.
Alderman Urban is a yes. Anyone else?
Alderman Mitchell, aye.
Alderman Mitchell is a yes. Anyone else? Last call. All right, Peter.
Your Honor, there are 31 yeas, 16 nays.
Matter is laid on the table.
Dow, back to you.
I'm making motion that we pass the item.
Well, thank you. I was going to make that motion, Alderman Harris, move that this item be passed by a roll call vote.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Laspada.
Now we're voting on the matter.
However she tells you, apparently.
Alderman Laspada.
Yeah.
Yes. Alderman Laspada is a yes. Alderman Hopkins.
Aye.
Alderman Hopkins is a yes. Alderman Dow.
Aye.
Alderman Dow is a yes. Alderman King.
Aye.
Alderman King is a yes. Alderman Harrison.
No.
Alderman Harrison is a no. Alderman Sawyer. Alderman Mitchell.
Sawyer was a no, I'm sorry.
Alderman Sawyer is a no. Alderman Mitchell.
Aye.
Alderman Mitchell is a yes. Alderman Harris.
Aye.
Alderman Harris is a yes. Alderman Beal.
No.
Alderman Beal is a no. Alderman Zelaski Garza.
Aye.
Alderman Zelaski Garza is a yes. Alderman Thompson.
Aye.
Alderman Thompson is a yes. Alderman Cardness.
Aye.
Alderman Cardness is a yes. Alderman Quinn.
Aye.
Alderman Quinn is a yes. Alderman Burke.
No.
Alderman Burke is a no. Alderman Lopez.
My hand's still raised and not recognized. I'm a no.
Alderman Lopez is a no. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Moore.
Yes.
Alderman Moore is a yes. Alderman Curtis.
Aye.
Alderman Curtis is a yes. Alderman O'Shea.
Yes.
Alderman O'Shea is a yes. Alderman Taylor.
No.
Alderman Taylor is a no. Alderman Brookins.
Aye.
Alderman Brookins is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez is a yes. Alderman Tabarez.
Aye.
Alderman Tabarez is a yes. Alderman Scott.
Aye.
Alderman Scott is a yes. Alderman Tito Lopez.
No.
Alderman Tito Lopez is a no. Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Burnett.
Aye.
Alderman Burnett is a yes. Alderman Urban.
Yes.
Alderman Urban is a yes. Alderman Talafaro. Alderman Raboyas.
Aye. Alderman Talafaro is an aye.
Alderman Talafaro is a yes. Alderman Raboyas.
Aye.
Alderman Raboyas is a yes. Alderman Cardona.
Aye.
Alderman Cardona is a yes. Alderman Waggis Pack.
Yes.
Alderman Waggis Pack is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Yes.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. Alderman Austin. Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Yes.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa is a yes. Alderman Vegas.
Yes.
Alderman Vegas is a yes. Alderman Mits.
Aye.
Alderman Mits is a yes. Alderman Spassato.
Next Spassato is a yes.
Alderman Spassato is a yes. Alderman Nugent.
Yes.
Alderman Nugent is a yes. Alderman Vasquez.
No.
Alderman Vasquez is a no. Alderman Napolitano. Alderman Riley.
Aye.
Alderman Riley is a yes. Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Smith is a yes. Alderman Tunny.
Aye.
Alderman Tunny is a yes. Alderman Gardner.
No.
Alderman Gardner is a no. Alderman Capelman.
Yes.
Alderman Capelman is a yes. Alderman Martin.
Yes.
Alderman Martin is a yes. Alderman Osterman.
Yes.
Alderman Osterman is a yes. Alderman Haddon.
Yes.
Alderman Haddon is a yes. Alderman Silverstein.
Yes.
Alderman Silverstein is a yes. Anyone I missed? Anyone I missed?
Coleman is a no.
Alderman Coleman is a no. Anyone else? All right, Peter.
Your Honor, there are 37 yeas, 10 nays.
The matter passes. Alderman Thompson on the motion for reconsideration.
Thank you, Madam President. You can ignore my hand there. I just raised it. I motioned to reconsider that last vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The nays have it. The motion for reconsideration fails. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Madam President, thank you. Unless you are allowing me to speak to the item that just passed, I have nothing else to add, since I was waiting before the vote as requested by you.
I did not see your hand, sir. If you'd like to speak briefly before we move on to other business, as you know, we took this matter out of order, out of deference to those who are celebrating this Sabbath. So I'd like to try to move the meeting along so we can honor their commitment.
Madam President, I appreciate that, and I would have liked to make these comments before people voted, but nonetheless, I will still make them, because I was too with an obvious opposition to this. A quick Google search tells me that our numbers were wrong, that there's reason to be concerned. I'm not going to get into the specifics, but clearly, anyone who pulls up the interim state and local recipients cost incurred through June 30 on the Treasury Department's Cares Act page will see that the numbers that the federal government posts are not in line with what we are seeking presented with here and now. My concern is that, at some point, if the numbers are being fudged, as I believe they are, if we are not being as truthful as Alderman Burke alleges, that this body will undoubtedly have to reimburse the federal government when the treasury audit of how we spent our dollars happens. That should give every single member of this body pause, not knowing whether or not the federal government has signed off on all of these expenditures, whether or not the Treasury Department has given certificates to deviate from the narrow list provided in the Cares Act. I hope many of us are still here in two years to address that issue should it come to be, because to leave the taxpayers on the hook for this $400 million mistake is not something I personally want to be left holding the bag for.
Alderman Lopez, you've made a very serious allegation, which we do not take lightly. The Chair recognizes Alderman... Sir? Please... The Chair recognizes, um, Alderman, uh, should, sir, please. The Chair recognizes Alderman Cicho Lopez. Sir, are you, um, raising your hand to speak to, uh, this item or something else?
Yes, Madam Chair. I think it's the same, same item, uh, as, uh, the previous Alderman also raised my hand earlier, but, uh, nevertheless, I think it's important for the, for the record, uh, that we, as a council, as council members, uh, nor continue to respond after the fact. I think that the, the, the COVID nineteen, uh, CARES Act funding, uh, and what it transpired on his public record uh, should be of concern of all of us. When we have communities of color, and I think across the city, we see the disproportionate effect that this pandemic had had on black and brown communities. Over five thousand black and brown residents in, in the vast majority have died. We have serious issues. We see have serious suffering in our communities. Over seven hundred and fifty murders last year. And with all that in, with all those tragedies mainly affecting the most vulnerable, I truly think it was a slap in the face to our communities to see two hundred and eighty million dollars go to the Chicago Police Department while we still wait for a police accountability bill. Now, I think it is clear, you know, that we have an issue of transparency. We have an issue of accountability when it comes to these decisions. I urge my colleagues, and as we see more CARES funding coming to or, um, to the city, to make sure that we do our due diligence to make sure that this doesn't happen once again, because it has terrible consequences. I will urge you also to see this is a, this is a sometimes, um, one page that was bottom, page seven, when there's a lot of business leaders who are commending the administration for the handling of the pandemic. I'd like to, I'd like to ask in our communities, in our neighborhoods, what's going on in our communities around violence and disinvestment and rental relief? It is our diligence, in our, our duty as legislators to make sure that we do our, our, our duty and account for these funds.
Sir, I'm gonna ask you with due respect to, to wrap it up so we can proceed.
I will, I will wrap it up. But it's very, but it's very important that we see that we have right now. Of course, a lot of business interests who have done very well according to this letter while our communities of color are suffering. So I urge my colleagues, as we have approved this budget, to be more diligent in our accountability and audit of every penny that comes in CARES funding. We owe that to our communities.
Thank you, sir. Chairman Dow, is there any other business that you want to present?
Well, uh, Madam President, I have a couple of things to say. First of all, I wanted to say that before I asked for the roll call vote, uh, while Alderman Harris was speaking, I was looking to see who had their hand up, and there were no hands, hands raised. Um, secondly, um, I just wanted to, uh, acknowledge that I wasn't sure if Alderman Burke meant to refer to the twenty twenty-one budget, um, in his, um, analysis, but, uh, the money that was spent was based on the twenty twenty budget. And then lastly, I just wanna thank, uh, all of my colleagues for, uh, supporting, uh, those that supported and voted yes. Um, it's very important that we get this rental assistance money on the street. And with that, um, Madam President, I move to return to the regular order of business.
I see, um, there are two hands row, raised. Um, if this, um, pertains to a matter that's already been voted on, we are moving on to, um, other business. If you have a, an objection, um, then you can note that for the record. Briefly, uh, the Chair recognizes Alderman, uh, Carlos Ramirez Roso.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to offer a point of information. Um, I was looking at the participants on the Zoom, uh, at the moment that Alderman Harris and Alderman, um, Dowell were making their motions, uh, to pass the previous item that just passed, and Alderman Raymond Lopez did have his hand up. And so I do just wanna note that while ideally, the raise your hand function will work flawlessly, given the nature of these Zoom meetings, I do think that there will have to be times that some Alderman will have to interject just to make sure that, um, you know, they're, uh, being recognized, uh, because that last item did move very quickly. I did wanna speak as to why I was supporting the item. Um, I just wanted to note that for the record.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Harrison again. Briefly, folks, we voted. The matter is, 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 is a matter of record. And if you wanna speak to the previous issue, I, what I would ask is that you submit a statement to the clerk so your comments can be noted for the record, but we do need to move on.
I, I understand that, but, um, I, as, just as a point of information, um, I would just like to ask my colleagues, uh, to remain from throwing shade. People have different reasons for why they're voting or for or against an item. Um, you know, mine was that I was supposed to have some information. I did not receive that information and I communicated that to the Chair. But I think that we need to respect one another on this council, and I just felt compelled to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Burke, um, as you know, uh, under Rule Ten, uh, the uh, deadline or the, uh, duration for, uh, speaking is ten minutes. Um, out of courtesy to you, sir, I gave you fifteen minutes. This matter is now concluded, and we are moving on. The next committee is the Committee on Aviation. Chairman O'Shea.
Thank you, Madam President. Reporting for your Committee on Aviation, for which a virtual meeting was held on Thursday, February eleventh, two thousand twenty-one, the committee had one item under consideration, an ordinance zero-two-zero-two-one dash four-one-zero amendment of municipal code section two dash three-two dash zero-three-one to include security instruments offering indemnification for workers' compensation and other insurance claims regarding construction and operations at Chicago's O'Hare International and Midway International airports. These items passed unanimously by the committee members present. If there are no objections, Madam President, then we'll pass to these items by the same roll call as the last item called in the Committee on Budget.
Roll call.
Ma- Madam Clerk, the clerk, the, please call the roll.
Alderman Lasfara.
Aye.
Alderman Lasfara is an aye, or is a yes. Alderman Hopkins.
Aye.
Alderman Hopkins is a yes. Alderman Dow.
Aye.
Alderman Dow is a yes. Alderman King.
Aye.
Alderman, Alderman King is a yes. Alderman Harrison.
Aye.
Alderman Harrison is a yes. Alderman Sawyer.
Aye.
Alderman Sawyer is a yes. Alderman Mitchell.
Aye.
Alderman Mitchell is a yes. Alderman Harris.
Aye.
Alderman Harris is a yes. Alderman Beal.
Yep.
Alderman Beal is a yes. Alderman Zalaski Garza.
Aye.
Alderman Zalaski Garza is a yes. Alderman Thompson.
Aye.
Alderman Thompson is a yes. Alderman Cardness.
Aye.
Alderman Cardness is a yes. Alderman Quinn.
Aye.
Alderman Quinn is a yes. Alderman Burke.
Aye.
Alderman Burke is a yes. Alderman Lopez.
Aye.
Alderman Lopez is a yes. Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman is a yes. Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Moore is a yes. Alderman Curtis.
Aye.
Alderman Curtis is a yes. Alderman O'Shea.
Aye.
Alderman O'Shea is a yes. Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor is a yes. Alderman Brookins.
Aye.
Alderman Brookins is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez is a yes. Alderman Tabarez.
Yes.
Alderman Tabarez is a yes. Alderman Scott.
Aye.
Alderman Scott is a yes. Alderman Cicho Lopez.
Aye.
Alderman Cicho Lopez is a yes. Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Burnett.
Yes.
Alderman Burnett is a yes. Alderman Urban.
Yes.
Alderman Urban is a yes. Alderman Talafaro.
Yes.
Alderman Talafaro is a yes. Alderman Raboyas.
Aye.
Alderman Raboyas is a yes. Alderman Cardona.
Aye.
Alderman Cardona is a yes. Alderman Wagispack.
Yes.
Alderman Wagispack is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Yes.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. Alderman Austin.
How long does it take to get up?
Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Aye.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa is a yes. Alderman Viejas.
Yes.
Alderman Viejas is a yes. Alderman Mitz.
Aye.
Alderman Mitz is a yes. Alderman Spassato.
Next Spassato is a yes.
Alderman Spassato is a yes. Alderman Nugent.
Aye.
Alderman Nugent is a yes. Alderman Vasquez.
Aye.
Alderman Vasquez is a yes. Alderman Napolitano.
Alderman Napolitano is an aye. I am present now. Technical difficulties, my apologies.
Thank you. Alderman Napolitano is present and is a yes. Alderman Riley.
Aye.
Alderman Riley is a yes. Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Smith is a, Alderman Smith is a yes. Alderman Tunny.
Aye.
Alderman Tunny is a yes. Alderman Gardner.
Aye.
Alderman Gardner is a yes. Alderman Capelman.
Yes.
Alderman Capelman is a yes. Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Martin is a yes. Alderman Osterman.
Aye.
Alderman Osterman is a yes. Alderman Haddon.
Hi.
Alderman Haddon is a yes. Alderman Silverstein.
Yes.
Alderman Silverstein is a yes. Peter?
Your Honor, there are forty-eight yeas, no nays.
Uh, the motion passes. Alderman Thompson on the motion for reconsideration.
Thank you, Madam President. I motion that we reconsider that vote from the Committee on Aviation.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Then the nays have it. Uh, the motion for reconsideration fails. Uh, Chairman O'Shea, back to you.
This concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Chairman O'Shea. The, next up is the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Chairman Viejas.
Madam President and members of the City Council, reporting for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development, which held a meeting on February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. The Committee recommends passage of the following items. Items one through six are a series of appointments and reappointments to various special service areas that were voted on collectively. Louis A. Manji and Ria Chong as members of SSA number twenty-seven West Lakeview Commission. Dominic Urbino and Leslie Showers as members, members of SSA number thirty-four Uptown Commission, and Charles K. Newsome and Mary J. Rogel as members of SSA number sixty-one Hyde Park Commission. I move passage of these items by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Aviation and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Item seven is an ordinance in support of a Class Seven B tax status for property, property located at fifteen thirty-four South Western Avenue. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Item eight is an ordinance in support of a Class Six B tax incentive for property located at thirteen twenty-one West one hundred and nineteenth Street. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Item nine is an ordinance in support of a Class Six B tax incentive for property located at thirty-four oh eight West one hundred and nineteenth Street. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Item ten is an ordinance in support of a Class Six B tax incentive renewal for property at forty-five forty-five West Armitage Avenue. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my report.
Next up is the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Chairman Osterman.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Housing and Real Estate, which held a virtual meeting on February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Committee has a series of reports recommending the passage of the following. First are the reappointments of Barry A. Schatz, um, Jacqueline C. Edens, and Horace E. Smith as members of the Chicago Low Income Housing and Trust Fund Board. I move passage of these reappointments by the first favorable roll call on the Committee on Aviation and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The first item, uh, is in the, uh, acquisition of the Chicago, uh, Board of Education property at sixty-two oh six South Racine Avenue. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
There are no objections, so ordered.
The next item is the sale of city-owned vacant, uh, property as is property at, uh, eleven fourteen South Mason Avenue to neighbor space for Mason Community Garden. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Next item is the acquisition of vacant parcel at thirty-four ten West Ogden Avenue in conformity with the Ogden Pulaski redevelopment plan. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Next item is the renewal of an amendment for lease agreement for LFL Properties, Inc., for use of forty-three hundred nor, West North Avenue for Chicago Library North Pulaski Branch. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
There are no objections, so ordered.
The last item was the third quarter progress report for the, uh, twenty nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-one housing plan. And I wanna thank the members, uh, of the committee that came before us for the, uh, subject matter hearing on equitable, um, lending and mortgage, uh, rates, uh, today. Um, seeing no further business, uh, Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Osterman. Next up is the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Chairman Mitz.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm reporting for the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. We held a virtual meeting on February twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one, and the following items were passed by the committee. Five ordinances regarding moratoriums in the first, twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, and forty-second ward. Madam President, I move that the City Council concur in the recommendation of the License Committee and pass these items at the same roll call vote as the Committee of Aviation report in the same unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Chairman Mitz. The next up is the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Chairman Burnett. To unmute yourself. Chairman Burnett, we will come back to you at the end of the committee reports. Next up is the, uh, Committee on Transportation in Public Way. Chairman Brookins.
Good afternoon, Madam President. Reporting for your Committee on Transportation in Public Way, a meeting which was held on February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one. The following the following ordinances were passed by majority of the members present. On page two through twenty-one includes two hundred and thirty-four ordinances for grants of privileges introduced by the local aldermen from wards one through five, eight, eleven, thirteen, fifteen through seventeen, nineteen, twenty-two through twenty-seven, twenty-nine through thirty-three, and thirty-five through fifty. Page twenty-two includes fifteen ordinances for canopies introduced by the local aldermen from wards three, sixteen, twenty-six, twenty-seven, forty-two, forty-three, forty-eight, and fifty. Under Rule Fourteen of the Rules of Order and Procedure of the Chicago City Council, Alderman Tunny abstains from voting on the following items, canopy zero-two-zero-two-one dash one-three-six due to an economic interest in the matter of Anne Sadist Restaurant as owner. Uh, number three, pages twenty-three and twenty-four include eighteen ordinances for miscellaneous items introduced by the local aldermen from wards four, seventeen, eighteen, twenty-seven, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-three, thirty-six, and forty-one through forty-three. Item number four, page twenty-five includes one subdivision ordinance located in the eleventh ward. Item number five, page twenty-six includes one dedication ordinance located in the tenth ward. Item number six, page twenty-six includes one vacation ordinance located in the twenty-seventh ward. If there's no objections, Madam President, I move that the passage of these items by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Aviation and un, uh, and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Next up is the Committee on Workforce Development. Uh, Chairman Zdloski Garza.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Workforce Development, which held a meeting on February tenth, two thousand twenty-one. Zero-two-zero-two-one dash four-four-zero, a collective bargaining agreement with Illinois Council of Police. Zero-two-zero-two-one dash four-four-zero, which passed unanimously by majority voice vote. Please let the record reflect that Alderman Thompson was not present due to a fire in his ward. Um, hearing no objection. Hearing no objection, I move for the first most favorable vote on the Committee on Aviation Report and the corresponding successful motion to reconsider. This concludes my report on the Committee on Workforce. Thank you, Madam President.
One moment. I think we have to actually approve your motion. Hearing no objections, so ordered. That concludes your report. Next up is the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Chairman Tony.
Thank you.
Madam President and members of the City Council presenting a series of reports for your Committee on Zoning, Landmarks and Building Standards, which held a meeting on February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one. These reports are grouped for convenience. The following items were passed by a majority of the members present. Page one contains a text amendment of Municipal Code Section thirteen dash sixty-four dash one fifty to further regulate standards for installation of smoke alarms and smoke detectors. I move passage of these items by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Aviation and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page one also contains a text amendment of Municipal Code Section seventeen dash zero-six oh four hundred regarding planned manufacturing districts and Section seventeen dash zero-nine dash zero-one hundred by modifying language regarding daycare facilities. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page two contains a map amendment in the forty-fifth ward, document number zero-two zero-two-one dash four-four-five for the address commonly known as forty-seven fifty-eight through forty-seven sixty North Milwaukee Avenue, which is being held in committee. Pages one through eleven contain various map amendments in the first, seventeenth, twenty-first, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, thirtieth, thirty-first, thirty-second, thirty-third, thirty-fifth, fortieth, forty-fourth, forty-fifth, and forty-seventh wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
All right. Page twelve contains the reappointment of Gabrielle Ignacio de Kievich, I believe, and the reappointment of Ernest C. Wong to the Commission on Chicago Landmarks. Both of these are reappointments. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page twelve also contains the appointment of Alicia Ponce to the Commission on Chicago Landmarks. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page twelve also contains a direct introduction to the committee extending authorized temporary zoning uses at twenty-six forty-one South Calumet Avenue in the fourth ward in response to COVID nineteen. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
All right. Page twelve contains a direct introduction to the committee and amendment to waterway plan development located at twenty-four twenty-four South Halsted Street and twenty-five hundred South Corbett Street in the eleventh ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page twelve contains a direct introduction to the committee and amendment to residential business plan development, number thirteen twenty-nine, for the property generally located at ten fifty West Wilson Avenue in the forty-sixth ward. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
And lastly, page twelve contains various large signs over a hundred square feet in area twenty-four feet above grade in the fourteenth, nineteenth, twenty-fifth, twenty-seventh, forty-second, and forty-fifth wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
And Madam President, before I conclude my report, I just wanted to note for members of the council that my zoning chief for the committee, Nicole Wellhausen, had a baby boy. Valentine's Day, Zachary is the name, and family is, and the baby is all in good health. So with that, that would conclude my report.
Congratulations to her and glad that the baby is doing fine.
Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my report.
All right. On the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, Alderman Hopkins, are you?
No, Alderman Burnett is here.
Oh, you are back. Okay, good.
Yeah, I'm back.
Chairman Burnett, let's go.
Thank you. I apologize. I've been having technical difficulties. And I really wanted to speak earlier about the eighty million dollars going to help tenants and landlords with the COVID nineteen CARE Act. Helped people for over twelve months, so I think that was a great thing. But first of all, I want to thank you, Madam President. Reporting for your Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, for which a meeting was held on Wednesday, February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Before the committee, there were a hundred and five items. There were ninety-two routine traffic items that passed and thirteen routine traffic items that did not pass. I move for the passage of these in the omnibus. That concludes my report. Thank you, Madam President.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Agreed calendar, I believe, is next.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam. I received from the city clerk Andrea M. Valencia a total of a hundred and twenty-four items proposed for the agreed calendar consisting of commemorative, congratulatory, and tributary resolutions for the following aldermen: Alderman Dow, Alderman Dow, King, Taylor, Alderman Sawyer, Alderman Harris, Alderman Garza, Ramirez Rosa, King, and others; Alderman Thompson, Alderman Quinn, Alderman Burke, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Coleman, Alderman Rodriguez, Alderman Burnett, Alderman Irving, Alderman Viegas, and Coleman, Alderman Nugent, Alderman Riley, Alderman Osterman. I move the passage of the agreed calendar in the omnibus.
The chair recognizes Alderman Siccho Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm pursuant to Rule forty-eight. I move to suspend the rules to consider and adopt Record Number two thousand and twenty-one two-two-five, a resolution submitted on behalf of Congress strikers on February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one, directing the Health Commissioner to deny a large recycling facility permit to General Iron. We have Congress strikers who are in our throes in their lives, and since an urgent matter, I order I move to suspend the rules, Madam Chair.
The chair recognizes Alderman Cardenas.
Madam President, our rules require that any items of substance be referred to committee so they can be properly debated for consideration. It would be unfair to the public and our colleagues if we were to consider this item without sufficient notice. Additionally, this item was not on the agenda for today and therefore not properly noticed. If we were to consider this item, it would be a violation of the Open Meetings Act and more importantly, would violate the law. And obviously, we're here for that reason. So for those reasons, Madam President, I move to lay on the table this motion.
There is a motion to lay on the table, Alderman Siccho Lopez's motion to suspend the rules and to take up an item that has not been noticed for this meeting and would otherwise violate the Open Meetings Act if this were considered. So, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. A yea vote is in favor of laying the matter on the table. A no vote is to consider the item. Madam Clerk.
Alderman Lasparra.
No.
Alderman Lasparra is a no. Alderman Hopkins.
Aye.
Alderman Hopkins is a yes. Alderman Dow.
Aye.
Mendal is a yes. Alderman King.
Aye.
Alderman King is a yes. Alderman Harrison.
Yes.
Alderman Harrison is a yes. Alderman Sawyer.
No.
Alderman Sawyer is a no. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Mitchell is a yes. Alderman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Harris is a yes. Alderman Beal.
No.
Alderman Beal is a no. Alderman Sodloski-Garza. I know you're on mute. I see you.
We are muted. Alderman Garza, you are still muted. Madam Clerk, why don't we?
Okay, I'll come back to you, Alderman Garza. And if you want to put it away, guys, we don't have a chat. Alderman Thompson. Alderman Thompson is a yes. Alderman Cardenas.
Aye.
Alderman Cardenas is a yes. Alderman Quinn.
Aye.
Alderman Quinn is a yes. Alderman Burke.
No.
Alderman Burke is a no.
Alderman Garza is a yes.
Alderman Garza is a yes. Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Lopez is a no. Alderman Coleman.
Yes.
Alderman Coleman is a yes. Alderman Moore. Alderman Curtis.
Yes.
Alderman Curtis is a yes. Alderman O'Shea.
Yes.
Alderman O'Shea is a yes. Alderman Taylor.
No.
Alderman Taylor is a no. Alderman Brookins.
Yes.
Alderman Brookins is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez.
No.
Alderman Rodriguez is a no. Alderman Tabarez.
Yes.
Alderman Tabarez is a yes. Alderman Scott.
Aye.
Alderman Scott is a yes. Alderman Siccho Lopez.
No.
Alderman Siccho Lopez is a no. Alderman Maldonado.
Yes. Aye.
Alderman Maldonado is a yes. Alderman Burnett.
Yes.
Alderman Burnett is a yes. Alderman Urban.
Yes.
Alderman Urban is a yes. Alderman Talafaro.
Aye.
Alderman Talafaro is a yes. Alderman Revoyes.
Aye.
Alderman Revoyes is a yes. Alderman Cardona.
No.
Alderman Cardona is a no. Alderman Wagispack.
Yes.
Alderman Wagispack is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Alderman Austin. Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
No.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa is a no. Alderman Vegas.
Yes.
Alderman Vegas is a yes. Alderman Metz. Alderman Spasato.
Spasato, yes.
Alderman Spasato is a yes. Alderman Metz is a yes. Alderman Nugent.
Yes.
Alderman Nugent is a yes. Alderman Basbath.
No.
Alderman Basbath is a no. Alderman Napolitano.
Yes.
Alderman Napolitano is a yes. Alderman Riley.
Yes.
Alderman Riley is a yes. Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Smith is a yes. Alderman Tony.
Yes.
Alderman Tony is a yes. Alderman Gardner.
No.
Alderman Gardner is a no. Alderman Capelman.
Yes.
Alderman Capelman is a yes. Alderman Martin.
No.
Alderman Martin is a no. Alderman Osterman.
Yes.
Osterman is a yes. Alderman Haddon.
No.
Alderman Haddon is a no. Alderman Silverstein.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez is a no.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez is a no. Anyone else? I missed. Okay, Peter?
Your Honor, there are thirty-two yays, fifteen nays.
The motion to lay it on the table is granted. The chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to set the record straight that Alderman Cardenas was incorrect, that this body has every right to suspend the rules for the immediate consideration of a resolution. We do it every day. We do it every month. And to say that it was not noticed up was an inaccurate dictation of the rules of this particular body. So Alderman Lopez has every right to ask for immediate consideration for a resolution.
Thank you, sir. The motion to lay it on the table is granted. I believe that we were in the middle of the agreed calendar. Alderman Harris, I believe you had a pending motion.
I have a motion. I move passage of the agreed calendar in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Next up is new business. Madam Clerk, we'll call the wards beginning with the first.
Claims, free permits, license fee exemptions, which are referred to the Committee on Finance. Zoning amendments, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Traffic regulations, traffic control signals, and traffic signs, which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Grants of privilege on and over the public way, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. An exemption from physical barrier requirements for commercial driveway alley access to parking facilities, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Lasparra has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Section four dash six dash two thirty to prohibit booting of motor vehicles on private property within the first ward, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Lasparra has a proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Titles two, four, eight, nine, ten, and thirteen to update language concerning urban mobility and traffic safety and to encourage achievements of the Vision Zero goals and to call upon the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety to hold hearings to discuss implementation of Vision Zero policies and equitable mobility, which is referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Alderman Lasparra also has a proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Honorary Brandon William McGee Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Sodloski-Garza and others have a proposed resolution to call for public health agencies to include hotel and hospitality workers in Phase one B of COVID nineteen vaccine rollout, which is referred to the Committee on Workforce Development. Alderman Thompson has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at thirty-five twenty-three South Ashland Avenue, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Cardenas has a proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Chapters seven dash twenty-eight and seventeen dash seventeen regarding refuge requirements for townhouse developments, which is referred to the Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy. Alderman Cardenas also has a proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Sections four dash four dash three-ten and ten dash eight dash one-eighty to prohibit snow and ice removal from suburban parking lots onto public ways, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Cardenas also has a proposed ordinance calling on the Commissioner of Business Affairs and Consumer Protection to update expanded outdoor dining program to permit BYOB, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Cardenas also has proposed street designation for Ulela Leili Garcia Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Lopez has proposed ordinance for amendment of an ordinance which authorized Budget Director to appropriate emergency-related funds in response to COVID nineteen pandemic and to modify ordinance repeal date, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderman Lopez also has a proposed resolution to call for public hearings on leadership of Chicago Police Superintendent David Brown, which is referred to the Committee on Public Safety. Rules. Two committees being called. The matter is referred to the Committee on Rules. Alderman Lopez has a proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Honorary Rosie Lee Atchison Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Coleman has proposed order to call for the Chief Procurement Officer to provide electronic PDF copies of reports and documentation regarding Section E of filed economic exposure statements to the Subcommittee on Slavery Reparations within the Committee on Health and Human Relations, which is referred to the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderman Coleman also has a proposed resolution calling for hearings to establish mission and agenda of Committee on Health and Human Relations Subcommittee on Reparations, which is referred to the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderman O'Shea has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Section two dash thirty-two dash zero-eighty-five by modifying charitable organizations eligible for contributions from voluntary employee payroll deduction program, which is referred to the Committee on Finance. Alderman O'Shea and others have proposed resolution calling for resignation of Chicago Postmaster Wanda Prater, which is referred to the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderman Brookins has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Kids Corner Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Burnett has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Honorary Joey Mondelli Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Burnett also has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at twelve forty-five West Washington Boulevard, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Urban has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Section five dash twenty dash zero-thirty regarding requirements for termination or discontinuation of gas supply, which is referred to the Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy. Alderman Urban also has a proposed resolution to call for hearings on the establishment of the Chicago City Council Office of Legislative Council to provide independent counsel to the members of the City Council, which is referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Wagispack has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards. Alderman Wagispack has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez has a proposed resolution for designation of the first Monday in March as COVID- nineteen Memorial Day, which is referred to the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderman Viejas has proposed resolution to call for hearings to evaluate economic impact of shared vacant and abandoned properties, which is referred to the Committee on Economic, Capital, and Technology Development. Alderman Viejas and others have proposed resolution to call for hearings on the implementation of Guaranteed Income Initiative and cash-based programs and policies to help working people and families become more resilient during financial emergencies, referred to the Committee on Economic, Capital, and Technology Development. Alderman Viejas and others have proposed resolution to call for creditors to provide a sixty-day grace period before reporting late payments to credit reporting agencies, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Riley has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Chapter seventeen dash seven and seventeen dash nine to modify the boundaries of cannabis zone districts and requirements for cannabis business establishments, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Riley also has a proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Section seventeen dash twelve dash ten oh five to prohibit illumination of high-rise building signs between the hours of eleven PM and five AM, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Riley also has a proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Section nine dash sixty-four dash two oh six by installing parking meters and regulating parking meter hours of operations on portion of West Erie and North Kingsbury Street, which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Alderman Riley also has a proposed ordinance for the extension of the privilege term for the Chicago Title Land Trust Company for maintenance and use of a public plaza deck at four thirty North Michigan Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Riley also has a proposed order for the issuance of a permit for signed signboards at twenty West Ontario Street, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. And a proposed ordinance for management and maintenance agreement with two hundred South Whacker LLC for Quincy Park, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Smith has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Honorary Dan O'Donnell Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Martin and others have proposed resolution to call for subject matter hearings on the Office of Inspector General's report on Chicago's response to George Floyd protests and unrest, which is referred to a joint committee comprised of the members of the Committee on Ethics and Government Oversight and the members of the Committee on Public Safety. Alderman Hadden and others have proposed orders for establishing regulations of the Chicago Police Department warrant executions, which is referred to the Committee on Public Safety. Your Honor, that concludes all dramatic introductions.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Mitchell, for approval of the journals.
I am not aware of any corrections to the journal from January twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-one, or February twenty-four, two thousand twenty-one, and move that both they approved by the same roll call vote, I was applied to determine quorum.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Unfinished business, Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I believe the only item of unfinished business was the disposal early in the meeting, and I'm not aware of any other unfinished business.
Miscellaneous business, Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I'm not aware of any miscellaneous business.
The date and time of the next meeting?
I provided an ordinance to the clerk setting the date and time of the next meeting of the City Council for March twenty-four, two thousand twenty-one at ten AM.
Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance.
What? Being ordained by the City Council of the City of Chicago, Section one, because an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent due to COVID- nineteen, the next regular meeting of the Chicago City Council, according to the applicable law, should be conducted by video conference on Wednesday, March twenty-four, two thousand twenty-one, beginning at ten AM, and should provide for remote participation, remote viewing by members of the public. If prior to then the Commissioner of Health issues a written determination that the City Council could safely proceed with an in-person meeting, the meeting will be held. Our location to be determined that can safely accommodate a City Council meeting. Any such written determination shall be posted by the city clerk's website, along with an amended meeting agenda, which will be included. A fixed location by ten AM on Monday, March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one. This ordinance shall take an effect and be enforced from here and after its passage.
Alderman Mitchell.
I move passage in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. The omnibus, Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I move that matters be passed by the same roll call vote as was determined used to determine quorum.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Alderman Thompson on the motion for reconsideration.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we reconsider that last vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
No.
No.
The nays have it, the motion for reconsideration fails. Alderman Mitchell on a motion to adjourn.
There being no further business before the body, I move that we adjourn by the same roll call vote as was applied to determine quorum.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Have a safe weekend.